Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the November 20th, 2018 work session from Methacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
............................................................
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, we have all of our directors here this evening with the exception of Mr. Navarette. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, we have two presentations, and then for next week, we have five presentations as the agenda so outlines. But for this evening, the two presentations, building usage, Dr. Engstad, and 2017-18 budgetary surplus review with Mr. Bricker. Before we introduce those and ask the board to move to the seats in the front row, I just have a couple of things to announce for the board and the public. So I'm advising the board and the public that we had intended on having Mylon and McBroom present their updated enrollment projection this evening, as I had stated at the presentation on November 8th. However, I was informed late last week by my contact with the firm that their revision to the updated projections, that they have completed all work pursuant to the terms of our agreement, and that unexpected expenses associated with a PA right-to-know request has cost them far more than they had allocated to this project, and therefore plan not to present. I'm advising the board that while this is unfortunate, it is my opinion that the information contained in the report reflects the quality of the previous work from the firm for which we have had used as just one piece of data in our decision-making process. The document speaks for itself. I have placed the hard copy in front of each board member, and as you may recall, we have posted this information online with my presentation from November 8th. We continue to seek feedback on the documents that have been posted. So for this evening, as we have done in the past, I have asked Dr. Engstad, who presented similar information last time when we spoke about the concept of school consolidation, to revisit a slide that was in my presentation from November 8th. I believe it was slide number 22, and that was a summary of the capacity, and I believe it was a member of the directors asking for some clarification on that. So I'm going to ask if the board would be so kind to take seats in the front row. Dr. Engstad will come forward and provide detail associated with that summary slide. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. I think it's on. This is my button to go forward. Okay. You ready? Okay. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share this review of our elementary and secondary programs, and how our classroom spaces are currently being used in our schools. As Dr. Zerbi mentioned, on November 8th, he shared the following slide. Let's see if I can get it to move. Okay, I'm doing something wrong.
Just hold on. Turn, got to turn it on.
Here?
Mr. Regina.
I got it. I got it.
You've got to turn my...
All right, thank you. So he shared the following slide, and it represented a summary of the spaces currently being used in our schools, and compared the totals to the information presented in both November and December 2016. Tonight, I would like to provide the board with some additional information about each of the school's current programs and the space allocation. But to start, I just want to provide you a little bit of the overview. The charts in the presentation use the same format and terminology that were provided to the board in November and December 2016, and spaces were defined at that time as homeroom-eligible spaces, which is typically a grade-level instructional space. Homeroom-eligible spaces shared, which is a larger classroom, that homeroom-eligible space divided and used by two different people for small-group instruction. We had a space called small group, which was a small instructional space, not large enough to contain a homeroom or grade-level instruction. Office spaces, which are primarily used for clerical, counselors, psychologists, special services, and then dedicated spaces such as at the elementary level, art and music, and at the secondary level, you'll see that there are places where they're noted on the slides. The review consisted of the following. I worked with the elementary principals to verify the total number of homeroom-eligible spaces currently being used in each school building. We verified the total number of small group and office spaces currently being used. We identified the specialized programs, pupil services, and other regular education supports provided in our elementary schools as well as our secondary schools. Sorry, that's not there. And then we compared the total number of spaces currently being used to effectively implement our existing programs, services, and supports based on Chapter 14 regulations and best practices to the total number of rooms previously used in December 2016. Just as a reminder, Chapter 14 has special regulations for special education classrooms. They must be maintained as close as possible to the ebb and flow of the school activities. They must be located where noise will not interfere with instruction. They can only be located in spaces designed for instruction. They must be readily accessible and composed of at least 28 square feet per student. In addition, pupil services and regular education supports adhere to best practices, and you'll see them listed in the appropriate space allocations. Other dedicated spaces, it should be noted that we counted for the library, gym, and lunch. They have remained the same, nothing has changed, and art and music rooms were accounted for in this review. The one change that's different is computer labs were previously in our elementary schools and counted as spaces. Those computer labs have been converted into the media center, so they're no longer required. So now I just want to be able to take you through each of the buildings, and I can point out for you the changes that occurred that reflect the numbers that changed on the bottom. So, one second. So at Arrowhead Elementary School, you can see in that first column, total homeroom-eligible spaces. We used to report 25, and now we're reporting 26 because the computer lab was in one of those spaces, and it's been changed, so we increased by a homeroom-eligible space. At present, the homeroom-eligible spaces, it's a mouthful, is currently the same, 18 in both. We increased by three special ed pupil services places. That is the two communications class, which in the 2016 presentation were dedicated and reflected as district-wide spaces. They're still district-wide programs, but they were accounted for a little differently. And then the other change is the reading specialist was sharing a room and now has a full-size homeroom-eligible space. The eligible spaces, you can see, we now have an itinerant learning support teacher sharing with the instructional intervention specialist, so that stayed the same. But you'll see that our total spaces needed for the program are 26, and that left us with zero open spaces at Arrowhead. Our small-group spaces and our office spaces remained the same. So I did the same process for each building, and again, I can point out to you the changes that occurred. So we'll do Eagleville. The reading specialist and IIS were previously sharing a homeroom-eligible space, and now they both have separate spaces to better serve the needs of our students. And they are currently using the two open spaces that were open in 16, and now you'll see that reflects zero. That was the changes at Eagleville. Moving on to Woodland. As I previously stated, we counted the computer lab now as a homeroom-eligible space. There's been an increase of two homerooms for regular education classes, so we went from 18 to 20. And we accounted for the two autistic support district-wide classrooms. As I said before, they were counted as district-wide and added in at the end. I put them in the building where they currently are. And they're the only changes that occurred at Woodland. Moving on to Worcester. The reading specialist and IIS previously shared a homeroom-eligible space. Both have now been moved. I'm sorry, did I not flip? I'm sorry. There we go. They are both now share or have their own eligible space, homeroom-eligible space because of the needs of our students they're serving. And we did increase by one office space by taking care of an office within the library area. Other than that, all the changes are the same. If we look at Skyview, and I apologize, but in order for you to read this and see the font large enough, the summary is on the next page, but I'll let you see that for just a second. The changes that occurred, we added a career center, a sensory room, and a PE annex. ESL is now using a homeroom-eligible space that was previously shared. An emotional support teacher is also using a homeroom-eligible space to meet the needs of our students. That was currently in a small office space. There is also one additional learning support classroom. You will also note that the number for art, music, and gym and library changed from 13 to 12. They previously had two art classrooms. Not sure why it's doing that. What is that? Do you know what that is? Okay, I'm glad you do.
You can't fix it. That's it.
Okay. I can talk through the rest. I'm sorry, the computer's updating. So let me just speak to the rest. I believe we were on our COLA. Our COLA, we reduced by two computer labs. Instead of three, we now have one, and those rooms were changed. So we now have also added an emotional support class and a world-language space that is shared. We created a space for staff, and there are two professional development rooms that are shared. And we recently dedicated two rooms to the REACH program, and those are the changes that affected the open spaces there. And the last school is the high school. We did decrease in two regular education classes. We added another learning support and an emotional support class. There are two listed as homeroom-eligible other, that is our testing center and our gifted education classroom, and the only other addition was a new administrative conference room that was added this year. And those are the changes that make up the differences between the 2016 and the 2018 review. This presentation will be posted to the website tomorrow as well. Thank you. Sure. Move this over a little bit for you. I tried.
Well, thank you, Dr. Engstad. Again, just for everyone's attention, the machine that was being used went into an automatic update, and there is no fixing that. But we will be posting this presentation, as well as, there's a presentation next by Mr. Bricker that'll be posted for the public's viewing. But please know that these slides, other than maybe some of the introductory slides, were all part of the presentation that was done on November 8th, and with the, yeah, the summary, and then there was an appendix to that presentation with these exact slides. But we're hoping that, you know, the purpose of having this conversation this evening is certainly to try to clarify any questions that that summary slide may have presented to the board, because certainly we want you to understand, you know, how we are using the buildings today. And I think what's equally important is, you know, there's an issue between understanding, you know, the use of the buildings and the capacities and the utilization of those buildings. So I'd like to, you know, clarify something before we ask Dr. Engstad some questions. So generally speaking, there was another question on the table about plan con versus capacity versus functional capacity, and I thought I'd share that here this evening as part of this conversation as well. So when we talk about plan con capacity, plan con in itself, in a general sense, is a process used to seek reimbursement from the state for large construction projects. So there's a certain set of procedures and things that a school district would need to do in order to get reimbursement. The process uses capacity whereby, as part of one of its metrics, whereby districts commonly seek maximum reimbursements by loading all available space with a maximum number of students regardless of the eventual use of the space, practice, or policy. So as an example, a classroom calculated for, say, 30 students in a plan con calculation may eventually be used by 15 or less special education students. This simply illustrates how the numbers can be that much different. A functional capacity, on the other hand, is calculated by using homeroom-eligible spaces, the data that we, you know, presented here this evening, multiplied by the student load or class size per our practice or policy, with the built-in safety margin. And if you recall, almost two years ago, we talked about that safety margin, it was recommended to us to be about 10%, which allows for, you know, which allows for a factor or a buffer for natural fluctuations in the size of cohorts relative to class-size guidelines that may require additional sections from time to time, and it builds in a buffer for typical inefficiencies in the use of classroom space. And I thought, you know, that information would be important. Now, I know that there are other requests as a result of my November 8th presentation, and we're working on, you know, gathering the rest of that data to, you know, share it with the board, but I thought it would be good to put it in context what Dr. Engstad is really sharing with you here this evening. This is exactly how, back in December of 2016, we were using buildings and how we are using the buildings today. If there was any, you know, can we use the buildings differently? Well, we can use the buildings differently, but, you know, that will take some, you know, some change, and it depends on how much different we would want to choose to do that and why we would want to do that. And all those changes have impact on a number of things, from school climate to, you know, the delivery of our program and the outcomes essentially of our students. So I'll turn the microphone back over to the board if they have any questions on Dr. Engstad's presentation. Any, we'll start on the left here. Anybody interested in, any questions? Yes, Mr. Earnshaw.
Just one question in general. During the presentation, you referenced changes that were made, I guess, between 2016 and today. Just trying to get an understanding of, like, why those changes were made. For example, where you had shared spaces previously that are now split, is it a result of growth in number of students, or we have the space available, or some other reason?
A combination of all those. In some cases, we added special education programs, so we added emotional support programs at each of the building levels, so that took up some additional space. We created itinerant learning support teachers to serve our buildings with the closing of Audubon, so they moved into a shared space, and the people that were in there moved to a homeroom-eligible space. So it was the addition of new programs, and we did try having our reading specialist and IIS people work together in the same room, but based on the current numbers and the needs of those students, they felt it was less disruptive to use the space, and the space was available to be used. Does that help?
No, that answers the question. Thanks.
Any other questions from the other side? No, this side, Mr. Earn.
I just had a quick one. I wanted to, sorry.
It's okay.
He deferred. Under other dedicated spaces, we talked about how the computer labs were converted to a media center. Is the, when we talk about media center, are we talking about, like, the iPads on carts? Is that...
Carts, technology labs, things in the library that have been put into place. So it used to have a separate dedicated space as a computer lab only, and that's been merged into other things to serve as media centers.
Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
You actually answered the one question regarding the reading and the IIS, that it was tried to put them in the same space.
Yes.
It was determined to be disruptive, so that's the need for...
Yes, the number of students, like Eagleville was a place where that's currently happening. The number of students being served and having both groups being instructed at the same time was disruptive, so we moved them back out, had the space available, so we made somebody else, you know, had somebody else move in to share a space to pick up.
Okay.
So the itinerant learning support teacher is currently sharing with another teacher.
Okay, thank you. And then just two general questions, or one statement, is I would ask that for those who are not here for this presentation and are going to be able to necessarily, unless they watch the entire video, hear your explanation of the differences between the two years, I was sitting there trying to write some quick notes down there, and I think it would be important to put below each slide for each school, you know, reading and IIS is the difference of the two, you know, or if it's emotional support, ESL, sensory, to put a description on the slide itself...
Yes, I can do that.
... so that people can see it.
Sure.
It might save some time, and might actually save some time for me going back and forth and trying to decipher my notes here.
Not a problem. I have all the changes. It's just hard to fit them on those slides because there's not a lot of room left on that slide. So in order to make the presentation large enough for everybody to see it, but I can certainly do that before we post it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then one other one for, in terms of the plan con versus practical that you brought up, Dr. Zerbi. So when you mentioned regardless of the eventual use, the eventual use would be items such as a special ed and a pupil services classroom, right?
That's correct.
A reading or an IIS. So even though that they are, that would be a homeroom-eligible space, practically, we can't put another homeroom there because we're using it for...
That's correct.
... other services. I just want to make sure that that is, I mean, that's a simplified way of describing what the difference is. Yes, we might have 40 classrooms, but three-quarters are used for this and a quarter is used for this, so...
And I do just want to point out, special education's the only one that has regulations requiring certain spaces based on score footage, but we look at who are the students we're serving in those spaces to make other determinations about the space we should be using.
And just as another comment here, that I do think it's important to note that we are finding ways to better utilize space in these schools, as mentioned by the computer labs turning into media centers. You know, we're identifying areas where we can consolidate and do things that we can. That's a perfect example, because when it first came around, it was mentioned as the idea that we may need to use the spaces that were once the computer labs.
Correct.
And we've actually used those spaces in every school.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
I think another point is that, you know, the way we utilize our spaces today, even in the homeroom-eligible spaces, it's not like we would be able to fit 30 students into those spaces even realistically without taking all the other furniture out and just having a teacher desk and rows of student chairs. So there's a lot more that goes into, you know, delivering instruction almost on all levels, depending on, obviously, the class. So that's, you know, one item to keep in consideration, and that's part of, you know, the dilemma that we deal with on an annual basis and why, you know, while, you know, while we have a class-size policy the way we do and the way we have targets administratively is the way we do.
Thanks, Dr. Engstad. I do have a few questions.
Sure.
One, the computer lab at Worcester is not recognized as an addition?
No, it was originally counted as a homeroom-eligible space. There were two buildings where it was not because of where it was located. It was not counted as a homeroom-eligible space originally in 2016, so we added it in, but it was in the other two schools.
Okay. I think we added some, I think at Woodland, I remember, I thought we added some divides. Is that represented in here also?
Yes, any of the spaces that are shared are divided classrooms at this point. So I'm not looking at Woodland, but...
So I can anticipate some questions that may be coming. So art and music are not eligible, or is that our choice of us that are not eligible?
They're not homeroom-eligible spaces. They're spaces, but we haven't looked at the square footage of those classrooms. But when we originally did this, we said we weren't going to touch art and music classes, so we kept them as dedicated spaces. So that's what we continue to count them as.
Okay. But potentially, they would be an option from a capacity person. I think, Dr. Earnshaw, how about that? Mr. Earn...
[laughter]
Sorry. Mr. Earnshaw mentioned percentage of room usage. One of the things I think that would be helpful to know is that it's, if this room is used, you know, five, six periods a day, or it's used one period a day for these purposes. And I know that, I don't, I think you can just give me a gut that it's X percentage of the time without doing a scientific study. Is it more than 50%, less than 50%, more than 75% of the time these rooms are being used in one way or another?
Yeah, that's part of the information that we want to provide to you.
Okay.
That is, I think it's important to know that, while we can just throw a number out, it's actually different in every building.
Okay. And I actually will say that I am surprised at some of the numbers that we see, not so much that they're for elementary, but the other three schools, the amount of rooms that are being used, and I think that's where we just need to go a level, a little bit lower on that aspect. So, thank you.
True.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. So I guess I wanted to get your sense of, it looks like the, there was an increased use of space in the elementary schools as a result of the redistricting.
That's correct.
Of course, of the, for the special ed and the support services. Can you speak to, it also sounds like in some of the elementary schools, I heard particularly Woodland, there's more English language learners. So is there a general trend of more space for special needs and support services being needed in general as a trend in addition to the redistricting?
Our numbers in special ed continue to grow, and that's no surprise. We're adding new programs. We've just added a REACH program. We dedicated two spaces to that. So as we're adding more mental health supports in our, in our schools, that takes up more space. Our ELD numbers are the highest they have ever been, so we needed a third space over at Woodland to help support those students. Woodland also had an increase, though, in regular ed classrooms. We opened some additional sections of a few grade levels this year, so that's accounted for in here as well. Again, we're trying to provide the supports and services for the whole child and make sure we have everything we need, but the schools are, the schools are utilizing the space to the best of their ability.
Not really a question, but more just a statement. When we start getting into conversations about the plan con numbers and functional utilization of the classrooms, I think that's where we go from a utilization conversation to an educational conversation, because, yes, we could utilize space in a different way and get closer to those plan con numbers, but the educational model that would be needed to make anything close to that work is not in line with what we've historically offered at Methacton. And so when we start talking about, you know, could we better utilize spaces, could we, you know, the art and the music classrooms, could we potentially hypothetically use those as a homeroom-eligible space? And the answer, I guess, is yes. Theoretically, we could, but that's when we started to get into that arena of what educational model, what educational expectations do we have here? And I think that's another important conversation that has to, has to happen in...
sure we have everything we need, but the schools are, the schools are utilizing the space to the best of their ability.
Not really a question, but more just a statement. When we start getting into conversations about the plan con numbers and functional utilization of the classrooms, I think that's where we go from a utilization conversation to an educational conversation because, yes, we could utilize space in a different way and get closer to those plan con numbers, but the educational model that would be needed to, to make anything close to that work is not in line with what we've historically offered at Methacton. And so when we start talking about, you know, could we better utilize spaces, could we, you know, the art and the music classrooms, could we potentially hypothetically use those as a homeroom eligible space? And the answer, I guess, is yes. Theoretically, we could. But that's when we started to get into that, that arena of what educational model, what educational expectations do we have here? And I think that's another important conversation that has to, has to happen in conjunction with this.
Any other questions for Dr. Angstead? Okay, thank you, Dr. Angstead.
Sure.
Before we move on to Mr. Bricker and his presentation, I think it's important that, you know, we, we, at some point, maybe not this evening, but maybe at our next meeting on the 27th, that we consider all the information that we have, what additional information aside from utilization and the, and the educational conversation that I believe has been mostly talked about. There may be a number of other questions that U.S. Board members have, but I think at some point here before the, maybe before the start of the new year, that we, we set a, you know, get to a point where we're setting some, you know, more definitive direction on, on this conversation. And that's just my recommendation. Otherwise, we could, you know, be, you know, having these, you know, minor conversations on a more frequent basis and, and not make any, any progress towards this. I think it's, it's important that we consider those things. So I'd like for your input and feedback for, for next week, if that's possible.
Yeah. Dave, I know that I said I would send you additional questions, and I did that today, so I don't, but the one question, one statement you did make at the last meeting that I, I do sort of want to have an answer on as I chew on it over the next week. You made in a comment that the six, seven, eight Arcola could not function in more or less the team environment because it would have to be more like a high school. And I'm not understanding why that would have to be the case. So can you explain to me why the, the team model would need to change at Arcola if it was a six, seven, eight model?
I think in, in, in general conversation, there is, there's so much capacity, functional capacity at Arcola. If we would add another grade level to Arcola, Arcola would be six, seven, and eight. It would, we would then not only need to take up any of the additional functional capacity, but we'll be looking at things like utilization of the rooms. So for example, a, a, a science teacher may teach six out of the eight periods and utilize that room six out of the eight periods. As, as an example, we would then try to figure out how many other rooms might be available during those off times and schedules. So the schedule would be much different than it, than it would be today. And in order to, to best utilize the space that's available, you, you likely would disrupt teams. So we'd be, we would likely, we could possibly team, but it would be cross teaming, and it wouldn't be the same type of teaming that you're accustomed to or that your children were fortunate enough to, you know, to be, be a part of and, and others. So it likely would be different. I haven't, I haven't done the, you know, the specifics to, for all that to tell you exactly, but in generality, that's what would likely happen. Because there's not, while, while there's, while there might be a number of classrooms that we can, you know, break up or split and, and reorganize, you're not going to get that just from that. You're going to have to utilize a space that's already occupied by the, the regular teachers from the core subject areas and other areas in order to fill the gap.
So just to understand, just make a comment for the comment, for the, for the community, one of the big discussion points during the contract was the Arcola team environment and the, the criticality of it, the need of it, and the support that the, the previous board had on keeping some level of whole child view of it. So it was a significant part of the conversation. So what you're telling me is that logistically, you're going to have some problems. So, so everybody understands what that Arcola team environment is today. Generally, there's two or three groups of four, I don't know what the exact number, that are part of a team. They might be the white team or the red team or the blue team, and they travel together and share similar type of classes. The main purpose of that is not necessarily the sharing of the classes, my understanding. I'm speaking completely off my expertise, but is that the teachers meet on their team time prep to discuss the wellbeing and the whole child aspect of those children today, six periods a week, one period a day, they meet because they all share those same 90 to 120 kids. So that is one aspect of the team of the Arcola that's used in both seventh and eighth grade that would be at jeopardy if we changed that model. And just trying to understand if that would have to change or why it would have to change. That's the purpose of my call. Thanks.
And I guess along those lines, what I don't understand is my, my children went to Arcola 10 to 15 years ago. They had, there was a team concept in place. Has that changed over the years as far as structure? I'm trying to get understanding what changed. I know that there's been a discussion that some of the spaces were taken away when Skyview was built, but I believe enrollment in six, seven, eight has also declined over the past 10 to 15 years since Skyview was built. So I, I don't know, I guess along Mr. Winters' question, I don't understand, I still don't understand what has changed and what would preclude possibly, you know, an option of having six, seven, eight in Arcola once again.
That's a fair question. We'll have that as part of the conversation on the utilization. Are there any other questions at this time? If not, I certainly take any questions via email or just plan to have this conversation to a greater length on the 27th. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Bricker, who will be presenting the presentation on the budget, actual review and the budgetary surplus. Please know that this information was presented to the Finance Committee this month, and as a result of that, there's also an item for discussion, not necessarily action, but an item for discussion on the agenda for this evening regarding the surplus. Mr. Bricker?
Good evening. So tonight I'm going to go through the budget versus actual review so that we can understand where the variances were in our budget to what we actually did see. Overall variance, the budget was favorable by about $2.6 million. Revenue accounted for $860,000. Local revenue was $580,000 favorable. State revenue was favorable by about $130,000. Federal revenue was favorable by about $127,000. The other revenue that was favorable was an insurance claim refund. The expenses that were, were favorable by $1.7 million. Salary and benefits, the 100 and 200 series that we talk about, were favorable by $2.4 million. The operating budgets, 300 to 600 series, were actually unfavorable to budget by about $900,000, and debt was favorable by $268,000. On the next page, we'll break down to what are the contributing factors with the revenue. The major contributing factors in the local revenue was interest income was favorable by $361,000. Real estate income tax was favorable by $273,000. Earned income tax was favorable by $264,000. The delinquent real estate tax income was unfavorable by about $183,000. Miscellaneous revenue was unfavorable by $125,000, and receipts from other LEA was unfavorable by about $354,000. State revenue was favorable in the special education subsidy by $134,000. The rent and sinking fund favorable by $85,000. Basic education subsidy favorable by $72,000, and social security was unfavorable by $115,000, $116,000, which is a direct relationship to the salary and benefit, the salaries that were favorable. We also have federal revenue that was favorable of the access, which is a program we participate in where we get reimbursed by $175,000, and Title I was unfavorable by $54,857. On the next slide, we break down how we get to the close to the total variance. I gave you the biggest contributing factors. So the first factor of the salary and benefits that were favorable of the $2.3 million. You have $485,000, $486,000 for strike days that were unpaid salaries. $175,000, this is based on the timing of when staff was hired and when they were actually budgeted to come in. There was an HR director position that was unfilled for $140,000. There's an open position in maintenance for about $60,000. The position consolidated in the maintenance department, saved us about $55,000. The unused salary for custodial casuals on call was a savings of $112,000. Peasers not paid due to salaries being lower was $380,000. MEA tuition reimbursement not fully used was $319,000. Social Security not paid due to salaries being lower was $224. That's the difference that you'll match up to the revenue side. Unemployment compensation was less than budgeted by $211,000. The important thing to note with the MEA reimbursement that's not fully utilized, part of the contract, as we do set aside, $500,000 for tuition reimbursement. That's done each year based on the contract, and its amount would be based, the actual amount would be based on what MEA's usage is on that. On the next page, we have the operating budget. As I said, this was unfavorable by about $900,000. Favorable was $174,000 roughly of IU costs, which were less than budgeted. There's a unfavorable variance of $122,000 for professional education services, an unfavorable variance of $199,000 for professional services other than educational in support. Lease payments were masked by the $1 million lease budget, and they were unbudgeted for. That was $679,000 roughly. That has been corrected in the future budget in this year's budget. IU transportation costs were unbudgeted in 2017 and 18, roughly $475,000. Again, that's been corrected for future budgets, including this year's budget. Private school tuition was higher than budgeted by $251,000. Detention center tuition was higher than budgeted, $225,000. Supplies were favorable to budget, less than budgeted by $307,000. Natural gas was less than budgeted by $112,000, and electric was less by about $121,000. Also, we budgeted for wonder payments that were in the budget at the time for $118,000, but we accrued for them the prior year. So all those payments have been accrued for, and that's been adjusted for also on future budgets. Lastly, we have the expense and the major contributing factors that we saved on principal and interest. Most of that is directly related to the refinancing of the bond, which was the variable rate, which is now a fixed rate. These figures are now more known, and as long as we don't refinance any, we would have those stays consistent. The only factor that may be a estimation at the time would be any new debt that we add at that year. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, Mr. Bricker, before we take questions, can you summarize, you know, what this actually is, is a picture of? I know we have a surplus of two point, nearly $2.6 million. It's a result of what? In, in terms of, we have one-time revenue that, you know, we got more revenue than we, than we anticipated, that we budgeted, and we have a lot of one-time expenses that were either over or under that resulted here. Is there more to that?
Yeah. So you have the interest income, which is one of the biggest factors in all the revenue, is $361,000 of the $875,000. That is a, an one-time expense that has been corrected and will be accounted for in future budgets based on the model that Mr. Earnshaw worked on with us to put together for budgeting in the future. With regards to the other items in the education, in the revenue, obviously, social security is based on what we use in salaries, so that's just a one-time. The sinking funds will not be there again because that's a one-time deal. Most of it is just a matter of timing and what the, what the state and government actually pay us on. Real estate tax income, that's another $273,000. That's based on assessments and appeals and what happens, buildings and new item, new house sales that come on. So not something you can really account for. You have, we have as part of our budget model that we take the assessed value as of April and use that in our model going forward. So changes occur through the year, up and down. If we do not do the reverse appeals, you would see that consistently go down pretty much because that's what people are doing. They're appealing. No one's appealing to pay a higher taxes or assessed value. With regards to the revenue, or the expenses, I'm sorry, I'm, we're not having a strike this year, and we're not, so that's a one-time, one-time event. The HR director, Mr. Regina's here, so that's been filled and taken care of. The open position in maintenance is an open position that has to remain open. We will remove the $55,000 for the maintenance department. That's also a one-time. The salary for custodians on call is basically summer help that went unused. That really depends on how much need there is with regard, so that we'll take a look at that for future budgets. The Peasers, again, directly related to salaries. The salaries were lower in the timing of that. That's just a percentage. Already went over to MEA tuition. Social Security's also. And unemployment compensation is, again, based on usage. We estimate what the usage will be, and we budget for that. With the operational expenses, I think I went through most of this. The two largest factors that were outstanding were the lease payments being not unbudgeted for, as well as the IU transportation costs. Lease payments are obvious. They were part of that million-dollar budget that's been cleaned up. The IU transportation costs, that is something that we now budget for in the future. So prior to that year, it was about $18,000, $20,000. And this is now a factor of the IU providing work-study transportation. This is not third-party transportation that we schedule, but third-party transportation that IU schedules for work studies. When that initially came in, apparently it lags a year behind, so you do not get that information until August. So by the time we had the budget, that information had not come out. It's actually a deduction from our transportation subsidy. So that did not come out of the budget and was not known at the time. That's why that was not in the 1718 budget. Having found that for the 1718, we did adjust for that in the 1819 budget, and we got an estimate from the IU as to what that total number would be and used that in our figures.
And if you recall, we're still working on trying to get some of the other detail associated with the request from the Finance Committee around that. So we still don't have that yet, but we'll have that for you.
And then we have the, the natural gas, and the electric was known going in that it was probably higher than budgeted based on the trends that we had. So that's been adjusted for. Obviously, the wonder is also a one-time thing. So for the most part, most of these items are one-time, not reoccurring items that we'll be able to save money on in the future. The debt, we will now have that be much more accurate, considering we don't have the variable rate. So that influences that also.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Questions from members of the, of the board? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, thanks, Tim, for doing this. He did answer a lot of these. So the, the one-time revenue and interest income on the local revenue. Can you explain that again one more time, please?
So the interest revenue that we had was, at the time the budget was completed, the interest rate was 0.1%. By the end of the school year, I had the interest because of going back to all the different banks each time and all the different depositories we have requesting them to increase. We averaged about 0.85, 0.9. Some of the PASL and rates were closer to 1 and 1/4. Going forward for this year, we increased those rates and we significantly, I think we increased this by $460,000 for this year. So that's already been accounted for. And as rates continue to increase, I mean, it's going, it's going to be favorable because I can't see the future. If I could, I'd make much more money in my own investments, but it's really a factor of the rates, interest rates that we can get. If we were stagnant and did not continuously follow up on these lend institutions, they would not increase it. So every month, I check to see where we are in relationship to the current lending rates, and if it's necessary, I say, how about an increase? So that kind of drives that. So I'm kind of pushing that up.
Yeah.
And we can fine tune that as we go forward. I'm sure Mr. Earnshaw will have me really fine tune that more for next year.
Yeah. Thank you, guys, for the, for the good work. Makes you wonder about lost, lost opportunity over previous years on that. The assessment increase, I imagine that the Finance Committee will reevaluate, I was part of the Finance Committee, will reevaluate that April assessment. And locking it in, I realize that we don't know what it is, but there's probably some reasonableness to make a presumption on, on that revenue a little bit. I do understand on the one-time items. The one I don't understand, I can't rack my brain around the tuition reimbursement being budgeted for $500,000. I'm not even sure that is actually what the number is in the contract with the MEA. So I think that's something that we need to look at for, for sharpening the pencil, as Mr. Roth used to say. And then the IU bus, my understanding, did we end up not getting charged for some of that last year for their support?
That, that's not their support. So we-
No, I meant around the support of the busing process. No, I meant around the support of the busing process.
They did not charge us.
Yeah, okay, so was that, but that was in the budget or not?
That was, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It was $68,000.
Okay, so that was another one-time thing, all right. Now, it's good to hear that a lot of these, it sounds like most of these are in this year's budget, but I'm not even sure if they're all even captured in this year's budget, so it sounds like there's a little room next year. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mike?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Thank you, Tim. This is extremely valuable. This is actually something that since we've been on the board and I was the finance committee chair, we've been asking for this from the beginning because you can look at the audit report and then you're immediately jumping into the next year's budget. So I think the looking back view to see where you could have done better in terms of, I'll use the word sharpening the pencil, these are, these are items that I think are important to look at every single year after the fact. Couple of questions I do have. You mentioned for the real estate tax income, where it's favorable by $272,000, and you mentioned that, you know, new homes and stuff like that, but do we know that for a fact? Do we know, is this a cause of a increase in the tax roll or is this a change in the collection rate that we saw? Or, I'll let you answer that part first.
It could be. I did not look into see if it's an increase in the collection rate or if it's, I know the assessed values went higher. It do account for most of it. I didn't break into how much the collection rate would be. If you look at the budget, I think we did increase the collection rate from 95.7% to 96.1%, so we do assess that as to where we are. One of the big driving factors of that is Chamindeau. So unless Chamindeau pays what their assessed value is and doesn't pay in protest, that's never going to be 100%.
Right. I guess along those lines, I would take a look at, a little closer into that collection rate there because coinciding with that is the delinquent real estate taxes unfavorable, so it may be showing a trend that we are starting to collect more during the year and not as much from delinquent. I know delinquent would be from prior years, but it may be showing a trend in a slightly better collection rate moving forward.
So we did a study on that back before when it was, we're looking at the, using the county to do the collections or another party, and we did see that the delinquent taxes were reducing due to the collections that they were doing. They were doing a pretty good job, so there was no reason to make a change. That, you know, if you look at the trend on the delinquent taxes that are available for collection, it was reducing, so that's a number we're going to have to look at again this year to see what we will be able to, because obviously, if there's less to collect, it's going to be harder and harder as it goes on.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the expenditures, the natural gas and electric, you had mentioned, you know, trends and stuff, but do we know how much Audubon accounted for that?
Not off the top of my head, but I don't, it was a lump before, so it didn't really break it down between the different things. We breaking it down now.
Okay.
So we can see that, so I'd have to go back. I can pull it and look at that if you want.
Okay, no, I just think that that will be helpful in, you know, if you're looking in terms of a broad number from, in a trend basis, but Audubon was a driving factor of 80%. I'm just making up numbers here, but it might not necessarily be a trend, it might be because now that's gone. It might not continually go down, is kind of my point there.
No, it should go down a little bit, but like you said, that building's going to obviously have an impact on our electric with that, so we will be following that through.
Okay, and then my last question, I guess this is kind of one of my pet peeves is it seems like there's always one of these a year. This year, it's supplies. So supplies was $300,000 less than budgeted. And when we talk and we go through the budgeting process, and again, you weren't here for this, but this is one of those things where we talk about, are we going to, you know, cut the teacher budget by like $10,000 and, you know, miniscule things that we were talking about reducing, reducing, reducing. How were we over-budget by $300,000 in this? And I guess, that's the second part to that, because I know what's happened in the past was, was a spending freeze put into place to not spend money on what the board had budgeted? Can you answer that, Dave?
It was not put into place. We did not put a spending freeze.
There was the spending freeze.
There was no spending freeze.
So the amount of money was truly $300,000 off for supplies?
That's correct.
And do we, we have all kinds of function codes and everything, is this primarily driven from a specific area?
I can break it down further, to either the programs or try and get it down to building slash department.
Okay, because in a prior year, I know this was, you know, facilities, equipment, that there was all this money that was budgeted for and was never spent, so I think that we need to keep a closer eye, especially now that, you know, you're working closely with Brian to figure out the, the projection as the years going forward, you know, identifying something like this where, hey, this is significantly under budget, why is it under budget? Do we truly expect to spend this? And if not, I think these things have to be eliminated in the future.
And Dr. Zerby had a great suggestion that we put in for the budgeting process so that we have the 1718 budget, the 1718 actual, the 1819 budget and a 1920 budget that they can put in, and then we have the variance to actual and we have the variance to the, this year's budget. So what, that helps eliminate is the, I have a $5,000 item. If I'm only looking budget to budget, I may think I always need that $5,000, but when you look at the fact you've never spent money there, you can now remove items like that. So that, that's not, way we can look at it too.
Music to my ears, another thing that we've been asking for is more focus on budget to actual as opposed to budget to budget. So again, thank you for all your hard work here, Tim.
Any other questions down here? I'm going to send.
Could you just explain more about, on, on the revenue side, the local revenue? You explained a little bit about the delinquent real estate tax income was unfavorable. Could you talk more about the miscellaneous and the receipt from, receipts from other LEA was, they were both unfavorable, miscellaneous and receipts from other LEA? Thank you.
Miscellaneous, I'd have to really look at to what, what miscellaneous items, that's the unknown revenue. Receipts from LEAs that were unfavorable, $354,000, that's a significant number. That is reimbursement for tuitions at detention centers. We are actually looking into that with the IU, who completes those forms to get us the reimbursement for that. We're trying to find out why that number is off by so much. There is a possibility we could get all that money back this year. So until they give me an answer as to where that is and figure it out, I, it's just something that should have been paid and budgeted for, but was not.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Then again, on the agenda for next week, we have five presentations. Please note that just earlier this week, we added North Monco Technical Career Center. The new director will be here, Gina will come and present, give you an update on what's going on with North Monco, as well as some of the other items as you see listed there. In addition to that, we'll do our customary reports, we'll have public comment on the board action items, we'll approve the board meeting, the meeting minutes, and then we'll move on to fiscal items. So there's a number of fiscal items, Mr. Bricker, that you want to review with the board, please?
For next week's approval, we'll have the list of bills, the treasurer's report, budgetary transfers. We can have the discussion on the surplus and one of, before we get to that, I also want to give you that we'll have the 2017, 2018 audit for presentation. For your approval at the board meeting, this audit will be presented next week by Mally, our new auditors. Mally will be represented by Mr. Furman at Mally, he's a partner there. Mr. Furman will also, has also been at the finance committee last week. He presented the audit to the finance committee in detail and he'll be happy to do that again next week for everyone. It's important to note that the audit had no material findings and there were no changes to our financials requested by Mally, which is in a tribute to Danielle and the work that she does with the accounting associated with that. So overall, a very clean audit, which was very good news to hear from us. And then also, for your approval next week, will be five items under the master plan.
So I believe that, you know, tonight would be probably the appropriate time to talk about the budgetary surplus discussion, but I, I know that we have some guests here in the room as well to talk about the master plan. If it would be okay with the board, I'd ask Dan to come down, go over some of the items of the master plan, and then we can go back on the discussion. Mr. Sikala?
Good evening, everyone.
And Mr. Sikala, they have the sheet in front of them.
Great.
It was a summary sheet that was handed out at the property committee meeting.
Great. A couple of notes before starting, you might find interesting, one regarding the high school roof. You might recall, a few months ago, we had a special vote on repair work that needed to be done because the gypsum roof decking substructure had unforeseen, unforeseen, basically, the integrity of it wasn't good and you approved the not to exceed value, I think it was $200,000 to complete that work as an outside number to make sure we were able to do it. And the final math came in and I, I might be wrong, I quoted it at property committee, I think it's $58,000 was the final number, which was within the original numbers we had before we started extrapolating on the contingency, so we're happy about that. And that, that was a collective effort. And secondly, I know Andrea, she's always asking in property, but we are still planning on finishing and opening the Arcola Auditorium on time. Bob told me that they, they just had life, life safety inspection approval yesterday and the pre-TCO inspection is tomorrow and, yeah, we're still on target to open on time, so just wanted to give you that quick update. Any questions about that? Okay. We have five items on the agenda that were discussed in property. Essentially, they represent design services contracts relating to scope and budgets that you approved previously for 2019 work. So this is a, some of this already, some of the design work has already been awarded and this is kind of the big tranche of it that's, that's left to do. I can address each one of them if you'd like, or I could field questions from you. In all cases, they, we've had multiple proposals for each of the items. We vetted the proposals and they're overall, I mean, some are a little high, some are a little low based on budget. Maybe that's another note to make, based on all the numbers we set up for 2018, we're under both soft and hard costs for the work we've completed thus far for 2018 and we expect to continue. And, you know, when we close that, in fact, we submitted a revised workbook at the property committee meeting, but again, we'll be under, when all the dust is settled, we'll, we'll still be under the, the established budgets for soft and hard costs for 2018. 2000, maybe I'm giving you more information than you want. 2019, as well as 18, in the master plan, we kind of set up arbitrary, collective, logical, arbitrary budget numbers for the soft cost. If the project was under, under $100,000, we just, we pegged 5% thinking, you know, under $100,000, the work would be like carpet replacement or something simple where we wouldn't need to do much investigative work. Between $100,000 and $500,000, the soft cost budget was, was a 15%, no, it was 10%, sorry, 5%, 10%, and then over $500,000 was 15%. Those are just numbers we set up just to have a budget to work with when we, when we created the master plan. That was kind of one of the givens that we had set up. So again, we have work spread out throughout the district for these five, five items. Some of it is miscellaneous mechanical work to take at, the technology closets to change from a wet system, sprinkler system to a dry system. There's, there's a couple of the next tranche of roof replacement work. We're recommending to stay with the same consultant for that because we had frankly a very good experience both on bid day and, and at the end financially. We also have some investigative work over at Woodland to do to address the water sheeting that's occurring in front of the building and, and significant storm events and, there was one other item. And then we have the permanent fix for masonry flashing concerns over at Eagleville. I guess I, maybe you should ask questions, I'll just keep talking.
Are there any questions from members of the board? Mr. Winters?
Just real quick, the, the number four on our summary sheet here has the Skyview roof replacement. I think when I looked on the documentation that Dr. Zerby sent out with the actual contracts, is that the old roof from Arcola or is that the newer roof on the Skyview side?
Pardon me? I actually don't know what section it is. We just, we just exchanged emails today with all the various sections. It's just the next tranche. We did replace, of course, the roof on top of the auditorium, that's done, so this would just be the next section. I can get you the specific section.
No, I guess my question is around the roof on Skyview, the new part of Skyview 10 years later. Is it part of that? That's the question.
We'll get that answered.
Yeah, I don't know, Mark's not here tonight.
Is there any other?
Yeah, just if I remember correctly from the property committee meeting, item one with respect to Shepherd restoration, there was a price difference between, you were considering Shepherd and Sobek for that. Can you just explain, is everyone aware of what that difference is and why you're still recommending Shepherd?
Sure. Again, there's a lot of vetting that goes on behind the scenes for the different professionals. Both of them are exterior envelope specialists. Shepherd is, is more appropriate for this application. Shepherd's price was slightly higher. Actually, if you look through the information, I, we're quoting a price of 70, maybe this is, maybe this is a question you're asking. The, the price we're quoting here is $70,650. She actually discounted, Teresa's the lead principal, that's why I'm saying she, she discounted the, her fee by 10% because she's already doing a portion of work regarding some other work that you've already approved months ago. So she discounted 10%, but, but still, her number was, was slightly above Sobek's. Couple reasons there. One is, again, masonry exteriors is her firm's specialization. We've done other projects with her and she's excellent at that. Secondly, the, the level of investigative work and reporting and documenting that goes with the whole process was much more detailed than that which Sobek had provided and frankly, looking at it in a global sense, you're going to, the chances of getting a, a much more excellent project that delivers the results we have to have, it's worth a few thousand dollars more to have Teresa do it.
Are there other questions? Yeah? If not, thank you, Mr. Sikala.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
So, so before we go on to the discussion of budgetary surplus, let's, let's just make sure that there are no questions on list of bills, treasurer's report, or budgetary transfers. Any questions from members of the board on any of those items? Yes, Mr. Furman?
Just a quick note that they weren't attached to tonight's agenda, the list of bills and so if we could get them out there for the board meeting next week.
Hence the reason why everyone looked at me with foreheads.
We'll get that addressed. Budgetary surplus.
On the, on the agenda here for this evening, not an action item for tonight or for, for next week, but it was recommended by the finance committee that we discuss or review the surplus resolution approved in fiscal year 2017-18 whereby the surplus over 7% would be allocated to master plan projects. Mr. Earnshaw, as a chairman of the finance committee, do you want to start with the discussion?
Yeah, sure, since I kind of was the driving factor behind getting this on the agenda. And I guess I'll start with, when we passed the resolution back in May, I believe, the expectation at the time was that the surplus would be around a half a million dollars. We've closed the year, the audit's completed, now the surplus is five times that amount, which is why I thought we should raise it and have a discussion about what to do with that surplus and whether the resolution that we passed in May should be amended to use that surplus for some other, some other purpose. I went back and looked at the past few years and, you know, we've been fortunate to generate surplus each year, which has really strengthened a district's fund balance and financial position to the point where we've been able to, starting last year, reserve some money for capital. Last year, we reserved about $400,000 for master plan capital spending. But looking back at those surpluses, I mean, it's varied. I mean, 2014, 15 was 2.4 million, the following year, .2 million, 16, 17, 1.1, and now we're sitting at 2.6. What this means, if we had a crystal ball and we were able to predict the budget and results accurately, would really have an impact on the amount of tax increase that we would have likely passed through to taxpayers. Granted, it's never really perfect, but you try to get as close as possible. And Mr. Bricker, you did a great job in explaining why we are 2.6 million and I agree, there was a lot of one-time items, but there's a fair amount, I think, what will be recurring items. I mean, look at the MEA tuition, that's going to be a recurring item. I don't know how we budgeted gas and electric rates, that could be another 2, 300,000. So, and interest income continues to grow, as does the earned income tax, I would imagine. So I think even going this year, we're probably barring some major events, potentially facing some sorts, resulting in some sort of surplus as well. So I have my thoughts on what to do with the surplus for this year. I raised them at the- I raised them at the finance committee and expressed my views and we had some discussion there, but I think as a committee, we agreed to bring it here and got to gather the views of the rest of the board members and what the thought is. And I guess barring any action, the full 2.6 million will go towards the master plan or any action to change that. I think that's where it resides right now.
Well, if I, I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, will the 2.6 million go to the master plan or, I don't know where the 7% cutoff was. So, it'd be 7% of the general fund, anything over that. So, I guess that's the question.
Let me correct it, I did do that math, it's not the full 2.6.
Oh, okay.
The audit report that we have has, I think, 2.6 million in total there. So, I think another $2 million goes toward, is reserved for the master plan when you look at the fund, the general fund balance.
Okay, okay. And I think probably the next best thing to clarify was, you know, how were we off between $500,000 and 2.6 million? And Mr. Bricker, I don't know if you want to share, he had quite an explanation at the finance committee meeting to explain this and he's caught a lot of what those issues were, but if you want to speak to that, that'd be good.
Sure. So, it basically came down to a million dollars of revenue and a million dollars of salary and expenses. A million dollars of revenue was due to the timing of when some of the items hit, the accrual for that and how that impacted the model that I had put together. Conversely, there was a over assumption on what the salaries would be because of the way that the system looks at it, the strike days and everything. It's still saying that the person needs paid that amount of money, so there's this, there's this report that says unpaid contract, it tells you how much of their contracts are remaining for the MEA and different individuals. So, that number was not taken into account, the different items that we would normally know, I thought it would have taken into account the strike days, for example, and it didn't. So, that overinflated the amount of money associated with that. And then you had the salary and the benefits associated with that, which are about 40%.
So, we're talking about a surplus in excess of the 7 million of the fund balance, the general fund balance, of the unallocated fund balance. And we have the explanation on where the discrepancy was between the projections. I think it's important now, you know, are the recommendations to do something other than, you know, have the allocation go to the master plan? I think that's where we had quite a bit of conversation. And I made the recommendation that we move it to the table here only because, you know, we would have that in isolation and we have to rehash that again at some point. So, I don't know if anyone has questions on that entire matter?
I would, just not being part of the finance committee and not having attended, I would be curious to hear what your thoughts were, not just Mr. Earnshaw, but specifically of Mr. Winters and Mr. Earnshaw here who are both in finance in their paid jobs. I would like to hear what your thoughts are. I mean, I appreciate you opening it up to the table, but I do look for your expertise in addition to Mr. Brickers.
My thoughts were to, if you look at the 2 million that went to, committed to the master plan from this current fiscal year, my thoughts were, since we originally expected about a half million dollars worth of surplus to be committed to the master plan, leave that committed, that half million. And then with the remaining 1.5 billion, to the extent we can, leave that balance in the general fund or somehow set it aside. You don't want to take it all in one year in providing some sort of tax relief, but figure out some mechanism in working with Mr. Bricker and Dr. Zerby to figure out a way to provide some sort of tax relief, use it to offset future expenses in a manner in which it doesn't cause a big up and down the amount of any required tax increase. Because if we take it all in one year, the expenses aren't going away unless there's some other dramatic change within the district. So, then you're faced with those expenses coming right back in with nothing to offset them.
And that makes sense to me from hearing your standpoint. I mean, and I think when I look at it as a whole, our big concern was facilities and possibly not all areas, but some of our facilities had been ignored. So, I think the initial reaction is, oh, good, we have this extra money, we have all these facilities, let's put it there. But what you say does make sense to me as well. You know, we have so much to pay for, but this was unexpected and that seems fair, fair to me.
And I'm not saying slow down anything we're doing on the master plan, it's just a question of how do you fund those expenditures? And I think we've kind of got a plan together where we're borrowing a certain amount each year and it's been at a level fortunately where the total amount of debt on the district has not been increasing. I mean, when you see the audit report, if you look at it, you'll see that our debt has remained flat year to year, even though we had a fairly substantial borrowing last fall to fund this past summer's master plans projects.
And I will just add, the point here is what we thought, like you said, what we thought was going to be about 0.5 million. So, that's kind of when we put that resolution in place, that's what we had in mind. And this, like you said, is a much different number.
Any other comments or thoughts? I know our other finance committee member, Mr. Navarette, had some comments on this matter, but he's certainly not here, I'm not going to speak for him.
I just have a question, because I'm not on the finance committee either, so I'm just trying to understand the wording of this. So, whereby surplus over 7% refers to what? 7%?
Of the unallocated general fund balance.
Okay, so that is...
Is that right?
Okay. Okay, so 7% of that is where that $500,000 is coming from?
No.
No?
The 500,000 was the forecasted surplus around the May timeframe from the 2017-18 fiscal year.
Okay. So, the general unallocated fund balance is currently...
Be mad at that?
No, I'm just trying to understand what...
Yeah, so let me paint a picture. So, we have a budget on a regular basis and then we have what are called unallocated fund balance. And the unallocated fund balance, by law, we need to keep within a certain percentage, which is generally 8%. However, as a matter of this mechanism that we passed, we said anything where the unallocated fund balance would be greater than 7% of the budget.
Of the budget, okay.
Of the budget.
Okay.
We would then allocate those remaining dollars to the master plan. So, in this instance, and I think Mr. Earnshaw assured that while we have a surplus of about 2.6 million dollars, part of that money will be part of the 7% held and the rest of that money would then be put into this specific account for that purpose. So, the $2 million rather than 2.6.
Okay, I guess that was my question, 7% of what? So, it's of the budget?
Of the budget.
Thank you.
And I'm not going to speak for Ralph, but his biggest thing was using it as a one-time use. So, instead of borrowing the money to put it towards, correct me if I'm wrong, using it, paying it, having the money and actually paying for it versus borrowing. So, using a percentage this year as a one-time. Am I correct as that, you know, what he was discussing? But my thing was, I had questions about, with this surplus, were we able to lower the taxes for the next year? And that's not what we would recommend because you want to have some tax collection with the interest rate. Sorry, my voice is killing me. We don't want to lower the collection of the one, we have it at 1% right now for the income, so for our taxes that we're taxing. I was saying, could we lower it for the following year because we have that surplus? However, that would put us into a more of a debt going forward. You know what I'm trying to say with, so I want to keep, we want to keep it steady. And my saying, my recommendation is use a percentage as a one-time. I don't know what that percentage would be, but use a percentage of that 2 million as a one-time use for a project that we're looking to do. That makes...
Any other comments, questions?
I guess I'm just trying to understand, within finance committee, were there differing suggestions on how to place this money? Is that why it's been brought forward to the board? So, it's kind of difficult without Mr. Navarette here to know...
It is, yeah. There were some opposing opinions and it'd be inappropriate for me to explain what his position is on the matter.
I think it's difficult without all of the... Yeah, I recommend we have him here to discuss it because between the two of them, there were very different approaches on this.
I think in general, I guess, I'm just going to, I'm not going to speak for anyone, but I can generalize what the options really are. I think the options are stay where it is, nothing changes. It is, you know, we just continue moving forward. The other option, and you alluded to Ms. Kangrow, that the district could decide with the money that they have is to actually give a rebate back to the taxpayers. That is an option. I'm not suggesting that that is what we ought to do. I'm just, that is an option. Another thing that you could do is use it for one-time expenses and similar to what you're really trying to do with the master plan project, but instead of using it for facilities, you would use it for, say, you're going to do one-time purchase of a truck or of some other, you know, things that are, that are investments that usually go beyond five to seven years. Now, what Mr. Earnshaw is suggesting is that you use it as some tax relief so that if your increase, and if you look at our projected budgets, our last projection back in May before you adopted this year's budget, we projected probably a million dollars in deficit out each year. So, maybe what Mr. Earnshaw is saying, the other option is to offset those, that potential deficit with some of this money. I will tell you that each of those options that I kind of generalized, you know, have its pluses and minuses. And I think, you know, if the board so cares, you know, certainly, you know, Mr. Bricker and I could, you know, provide some analysis and provide you that information if need be, but I certainly don't want to speak on behalf of what we ought to do here. But when there's a recommendation on the table, I'll be glad to chime in of what you'll understand to mean, the pros and cons to it.
Yeah, I would agree that my understanding of what transpired at finance was that there were two very different opinions. And I know that it's completely outside of Mr. Navarette's control that he's not here right now to participate in the discussion. So, I think that this is something that we should revisit so that the full understanding of both sides can be heard.
Do you want to push it on to the 27th?
Yeah, but I wouldn't continue it on the 27th, but I do want to begin the conversation here. I just want to make it clear that this, I don't think we're going to hear the end of it tonight.
So, any other comments?
Just to clarify one point that you mentioned, as far as, you know, using this money to offset one-time expenses that might be in next year's budget, you get the same result that I'm kind of looking for. So, to the extent you have vehicles you need to purchase in next year's budget, you just want to put them in the budget, you use some of this money to fund those. You get the same result that I'm thinking about.
Yes, yes. And just to clarify that a little bit further, there is a difference then, because if you do it to offset the budget, it's a different story. It's a different option for the board, not necessarily doing one-time expenses. So, it doesn't matter where the one-time expenses are.
I just want to make sure that I understand this. So, would we require a new resolution if we were to allocate the money differently?
Yes.
I do think it's important to have Ralph here to hear his commentary on here. I also think that we're going about this in a slightly flawed way here as we're looking at just one small aspect and trying to decide where that money should go without looking at the things that are tied to it. So, it's not publicly available until next week, but I can speak in general terms about the audit report. And even if you go back to last year's audit report, which is on the website now, we had 1.2 million dollars roughly sitting in the capital projects fund. We had a 7.3 million unassigned fund balance and we had committed at that point $375,000 to the facilities master plan. So, that's where we stood last year. If you're looking at where we stand this year, according to the audit report, which will be hopefully approved next week, we will be at 7.6 million dollars for an unassigned fund balance. We will have 2.3 million dollars committed for the facilities master plan. And it does not actually list what the capital reserve is on this, the way that they have this one written out here. It might actually be part of the borrowing here. But I think one of the things that I'm trying to get to is that, you know, we're talking about the borrowing that we do and how we could offset that. We also, I don't think we've realized what we've done to the, not we, but as Methacton in general for years, what's happened to the capital projects fund? I think if, it would be important to look at, again, I'm kind of notorious, I guess, for saying this, but look at surrounding districts and see the size of their budget and what's sitting in their capital projects fund. According to our treasurer's report from October, since this one's not on there, we have $480,000 sitting in the capital reserve account with the capital campaign account at $60,000. I would venture a bet that the two of them combined is far less than what we've had in the past and what other districts want to keep in their capital reserve account. So, I do agree that it is significantly above the $500,000 that we expected. But when we're continually talking about increased borrowing, what we're going to do with Arrowhead, to move the money away from our largest, our largest increasing expenditure moving forward seems foolish. It's one of those things where if you're going to borrow 7.5 million dollars and you have 2.5 million, would you borrow the full 7.5 million dollars or would you borrow the $5 million and reduce the amount of cost? I mean, why would you pay interest expense when you're not required to pay interest expense? And especially in a time of rising interest rates, yeah, it's great in terms of our savings, but we, I think the finance committee's already talked about it now, is interest rates are going to continue to rise, so are you going to borrow a little earlier to get it in on a better rate? So, I don't think that this is just as simple as, we said it was going to be over 7%, it was going to be $500,000, I think we should do this, this, or this. I think you need to put this in a broader picture and maybe Tim, you can kind of work on this a little bit with Dr. Zerby. I mean, I think you guys kind of get where I'm coming from in this. It needs to be a broader picture than just, it's more than what we thought, what should we do with it? So, I, as of now, without hearing what Ralph has to say, I would say I would leave it the way that we had it before. And if it brings our committed amount for a facilities master plan to just under 2.4 million, then I say you reduce the borrowing moving into next year or you reduce the borrowing after the next year. So, that's my two cents.
Any other comments?
Yeah, the only other, I agree with a lot was said, I always agree with Brian said also, so I'm open-minded on this, but the Peasars has been something else that other school districts have used reserves for. Now, we have gone through most of the accelerated phases, but it will continue to go up the next few years. And that may be a way, I think Brian indicated, you know, to spread it over different years, you know, put that money away for future budgets, use that money for those increases. You're using it for an allocated purpose and not just deciding what to do with it or throwing it, you know. But at the same time, I agree with Mike, is that we know that we have a significant amount of projects already in front of us. And more importantly, how did we get here, right? The whole 41 years, 43 years at Arrowhead with no maintenance and being the capital reserve being driven down where those, some of those schools were neglected along the way. Granted, there was a lot of investment in property along the way, but obviously we have 80-some million dollars or now probably down to about 70 million dollars to be looking forward for the next eight years or so.
Are there any other...
Just as a follow-up for next week, Tim, if you could just answer a question for me. In the current year's audit report, in the way that they have this listed, they do have the line item that says restricted for capital projects. Can you confirm for me if that is just the amount of the bonds that we have or if there's any other part of the capital reserve that's been included in that?
Sure, and if I have Mr. Furman here, I'm sure he'd answer it even better.
Perfect, thank you.
Are there any other comments? So, if it's okay with the board, we'll leave this item on for further discussion for next week, assuming...
week, assuming that Mr. Navarrett, you know, will be present as well as the rest of you. Okay, thank you very much for the conversation. Are there any other questions on fiscal items? If not, we'll move on to the next category of personnel items. Mr. Regina?
Yeah, thank you. Number of items for the board's consideration this evening. We have one item under resignations for professional. That's a resignation of a Spanish instructor at Arcola Intermediate. We do have an exit interview scheduled, so I will have a better idea on why that is afterwards. Resignation of classified, that is an instructional aide, and that instructional aide has gotten a teaching certificate and is looking forward to progressing their profession in the teaching field, so we wish her luck in that endeavor as well. C is an establishment of a new position, an assistant director of business services. D is elimination of positions. There, we are going to be looking to edit this revision a little bit into the next agenda, so we have to align the order in which we do these as opposed to create an pending item. So, we'll be doing that in the next board agenda for next week. Eliminations of positions, we have two eliminations. Both of those positions are part of the MESA agreement, and MESA has been spoken to about both of these. They actually are positions that have not been filled for quite some time, and we're now just putting these on the books, so everyone's aware of that. G, employment classified, we have two classified hires under employment classified. We have two items under change of status. We have four items under change of sta-, excuse me, two items under change of status for administrative. We have four items for change of status under professional. We have one item under uncompensated leave for professional. Two items for uncompensated leave for classified. One item under sabbatical leave. One item under compensated professional development leave. Seven items for supplemental contracts. One item for volunteers, and then two items for updated job descriptions. Thank you.
Mr. Regina, could you speak to the position eliminations, and could you confirm for the board which ones were and were not budgeted for as part of those eliminations, and why we're bringing them back to, bringing to the board for their approval next week?
Yes, I can, Dr. Zerby. Hold on one second, let me get to that part. Yes, so the secretary for business services and for the transportation secretary. So, the transportation secretary is a position that wasn't filled, I believe, based on things that have happened in the past, and I believe that position hasn't been filled for quite some time.
Since the outsourcing.
Since the outsourcing, yeah.
Well, approximately, no. It would be a year following the outsourcing.
The business secretary, some of those services I know have embedded in other positions as well, were also, again, it's not something that the department felt that would, needed to be filled, and after speaking with MESA, they understood that need as well. So, this is not something that has been budgeted for either.
So, both of these positions were not in this current budget?
That's correct.
So, what we're doing is, is after a review of all the positions, and as we'll probably talk about earlier, we're doing a, we're doing an evaluation of all the staff within the district in terms of need and not need, and so this is a matter that came before us, saying that it wasn't cleaned up, meaning getting, it didn't get approved for elimination by the board, so that's why we're coming for you here this evening to give you this information. How about some questions from the members of the board on any of the personnel items?
With the teacher on assignment for dean of students, what are we doing with that person's position that she's vacating?
It's a good question. The individual that's on the teacher on assignment was actually a guidance counselor at the high school, and based on a leave, we actually had substitute services already in place because of a leave that happened earlier that year, so it was an easy transition for us to continue those substitute services throughout the rest of the year while this person's on assignment.
And this is kind of a question for you and/or Tim. Tim, I know we've talked at Property Transportation Committee, we're still trying to figure out how to help you with transportation. Does any of this affect that yet? I know we're still looking for the right position here, but...
Tim?
Yes, that would be the job description, the approved job, revision of the job description for the accounting specialist, and that is the position that we want to fill that would be in my, in my area and it would help out.
Okay, and that's what I thought. And I know Danielle Penza has been, you know, invaluable the last, however long she's been here. In fact, someone outside the district even told me how fantastic she is. So, this is a, what do you want, a promotion, so to speak, for Danielle, I would imagine?
It is. It also better lines her to the task as she's doing. She is acting as the assistant business director. She tends assistant business director meetings. I think it's right in line with what she's been doing, and it really puts her in the right position.
Other questions on items personnel?
Under P, supplemental contracts, number five, I don't see a reason stated.
I know there was some additional services necessary in the summer months, based on, I think, some of the increased enrollment at Woodland. We had budgeted for a number of hours that they would do, and we keep that consistent across all levels with the nursing staff. And due to the increased enrollment and some of the increased needs at Woodland, we recognized that we had to increase that a bit, so this was something that was approved prior by the principal. Thank you.
Any other questions from this side?
Yeah, just one. Item I, one, I presume for that, for Ms. Penza, that's, assume that's a number, that number is a change. Could you just let me know what the percentage increase is?
The dollar figure is $2,500.
Okay, thank you.
We'll address that on the action item for next week. I'm sorry, questions from there, from my right. Any questions? Mr. Ryan?
Sorry, I'm just putting together some of the pieces here. Where we have for T, the job descriptions, approve the revision of the job description for the accounting specialist, is there any major revisions to that job description that the board should be aware of?
No, the only major change was putting some of the transportation duties within that position to accommodate the loss of the transportation secretary and some of the things that needed to be taken care of in Mr. Bricker's office.
I'm just kind of following the moving pieces here. So, does that mean that we will be hiring an additional accounting specialist moving forward at some point? Or are we looking to, or is this just, we're just touching the job description at this point?
We will be hiring an accounting specialist, yes.
Okay. I'm just going to continue.
This is, just going to give you an explanation. If you recall, we had, we'd approved a position for, call it a transportation manager, for the lack of the exact title. That transportation manager position was approximately about $65,000, would have been an administrative position. When this was vetted out with the help of Mr. Regina and Mr. Bricker, we determined that the fundamental skills and things necessary isn't necessarily in management, but in being able to provide the level of services to support management in order to make sure that the communications and the attention to detail and the daily tasks associated with transportation were handled properly. And we also knew that, you know, if we were to hire a transportation manager, we would likely need to put a transportation manager down into the, into the compound, which would further, you know, challenge us from allowing that person to not only be effective there on a regular basis, but being able to help us in other, you know, data-intensive manners that has now morphed into this revision for the job description. So, you know, as we look at this and look at our relationship with, for a student, we felt that, A, there are certain key times throughout the year that we need more help in transportation, you know, administratively and both secretarily, and then there's other times where we can leverage those individuals to help us with other departments and doing other work, not only in the business office, but in technology and other departments. So, the accounting specialist fits the appropriate need for us to get more stuff done and provide, you know, more elaborate and important information for the board and the public and for ourselves to make decisions.
Thank you for that. I would completely agree, seeing all the work that Tim does as a director, and it could definitely be helpful to have some type of analyst or specialist underneath who can just do the general Excel-type functions and everything like that, so freeing up your time to be used in better ways is, you know, definitely. In terms of the hiring of that, are we looking to do that in a given period of time? I don't know if that was already stated or not, I just kind of missed that.
Yeah, we would look to be moving as quickly as possible once that's approved.
And do we have a salary for that position?
We, it would be a C4 classification, which puts it at about, roughly around $46,000 per salary.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any other questions on any of the personnel items? If not, we'll move on to curriculum programs. Dr. Gutona?
Thank you. So, this month, we will be looking for your approval on the comprehensive plan that has been presented today, mark 28 days on display for feedback as required by PDE. And so, we did see earlier today that there were a couple comments there. We will review those to identify if there are any necessary changes. If there are any changes, I will give those to you next week, tell you what those are, and then we'll look for your approval and get the plan submitted to PDE by November The second item is a resolution for an E-signature. This resolution grants authority to the superintendent to electronically sign all E-grants, including those through federal programs, Safe Schools Office, and the Office of Teaching and Learning. So, the reason this has come about is traditionally, we have scanned hard copy signatures and sent them to PDE, submitted them through the grant system for any of our federal programs, our title programs, for example. Recently, Dr. Sisnovick submitted a grant, a safety grant through the system, and I received word that in order to commit the money and update the contract, we need to have this resolution board-approved and move to E-signature. So, I'm not quite sure what the difference is with the safety bureau versus anything else that we've been dealing with, with federal programs over the years, but this is a formality that we need to go through in order to have the safety grant.
Any questions for Dr. Gutona?
Does the E-signature resolution grant authority over anything else, or just for grants, for grant applications, or does it include any other authorities?
It would just be those grant applications that come through the E-grant system.
Any other questions? Not, we'll move on to policy. Under the, on the agenda, there are five first reading policies and 11 second reading policies. So, are there any questions on the second reading policies for members of the board We need to double-check. All right, so we'll, any questions on policy? If not, we'll go on to other. There's gifts and donations? Yep.
I just want to note, I included in my minutes, but some of the ones under first reading for this month just have references to legal citation changes. There's no actual change in the text, so it might look unchanged, but there are some modifications.
And then, as we move on to 13 other, gifts and donations, who accept a gift of $3,200 from the Methacton Education Foundation, fulfillment of a grant for the marching band, offset the trip to the Liberty Bowl. The second one is to accept a gift of $450 from the Methacton Education Foundation, fulfill a grant for the science teacher membership in Montgomery County Science Teachers Association. Trips on the agenda, a trip for the Methacton High School baseball team to Orlando, Florida, April 16th through 20th, 2019. There is no cost to the district, this is an annual trip for the team. The next one is superintendent goals. So, I posted and provided to the board some recommended goals for the 2018-2019 school year, and they are as follows. To engage, monitor, report, and then analyze the results of all strategic planning actions undertaken by the Methacton School District during the 2018 school year, to determine status, recommendation, recommended revisions, establishment, focus within the plan for the next year, and to provide a public presentation and status update with recommendations by the end of April 2019. Are there any comments or questions from members of board on that particular goal? If not, the second one is to provide a comprehensive review of the district staffing. This review shall include comparative data by building position student to teacher ratio, staff to administrative ratio, and cost per student by December 30th, 2018. The board shall be provided recommendations on any further staffing needs in each of the major employee groups, including teachers, support staff, confidential exempt employees, and central office and building administration levels by February 22nd, 2019. Any comments or questions on that particular item? Yes, Mr. Ryan?
Just a point of clarification that included in this would be, there's been a lot of talk over the last couple of years of the high school staffing and the enrolled courses and all that. Will all of that be a package deal with this? We're not just going to talk about the teachers without talking about the courses, without talking about the selections, right? This is going to be comprehensive?
I think, I think it's, I think it's important that, I think it's important that we get some feedback from the board related to what they would prefer to see. I think I'm pretty much close to being done with the analysis in terms of the data side and the comparative analysis, and working on the final touches, obviously there's a deadline there for December. But the February presentation is likely going to be a little bit more, certainly more elaborate to explain, to explain why we use staff in the way that we do it. So, it's got to be applied to the program and to the services that we provide, but I'll be glad to speak with any of the board members, you know, following this meeting to determine what some of the best approaches might be.
Okay, yeah, I just would put the emphasis on the recommendation part of number two. We have certainly seen plenty of data over the years with the Harvard study that we did and all that. I think it's important to move slightly beyond just the numbers and the data with the educational recommendation from the superintendent on, this is what we have, this is what I think works best moving forward educationally, so that we have a clear recommendation from the superintendent.
Yeah, I think, I know exactly where you're coming from. It's related to back, back to when we talked about, you know, the data associated with staffing just for the MEA when we were in the contract negotiations, and that was, that was kind of taken out of context, but it was used, as used as a set of numbers to point reference to, you know, you know, you know, just the difference, the differences, but doesn't necessarily put it in the context of use, so I completely understand what you're talking about.
Twenty before contract as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments on number two? Yes?
I agree with Mr. Ryan. When I first read this, when I, my initial thought was that this was the high school staffing that we had talked about extensively with the budget process last year, and that we needed to get resolved for the budget process for the coming year. So, I thought that would be a key component of this, that we just need to get resolved and put to bed.
Not to pile on Dr. Zerby too, but I think the contractual changes that came out of the arbitration touched more or less two primary schools, high school in Arcola, and also a little bit with Skyview with the prep time. So, the implementation of those for next year is a key element of understanding the staffing, so I think that is a key recommendation that comes out of this.
Any other comments on that? Well, what I'll do with the comments that I received this evening, I'll revise these and update the language here to reflect what's been discussed. The next item, number three, it says, "The board, provide the board with a comprehensive three-year technology plan by February 28th, 2019. This plan shall include a review of the services, software, training, staffing, and costs related to the operational and educational technology plan for the next three years." So, Dr. Sisnovick will, you know, will lead this pro- So Dr. Sisnovick will, you know, will lead this process, and I'll provide him guidance necessary to make sure that there's a comprehensive review of technology in the district so that, and I'd prefer, just to give you an idea, I'd prefer to take that, that plan, take it through the education committee, and then deliver it to the board if that's, yeah, it seems appropriate. We've been doing that regularly.
I was just going to say, as long, I know that's what we've discussed at education, that that goes along with how we're using the technology, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Item number four, "Provide the board with information necessary to allow for meaningful and deliberate determination of the Arrowhead Elementary School facility as it relates to the district's facility master plan and strategic vision for the future by March 31st, 2019." Any questions on that particular? No? And number five, "Provide the board with an action plan that outlines efforts to strengthen relationships and communications among and between employee groups and with the administration by February 1st of 2019." Any comments or questions on that particular matter?
I don't know if my comment or question goes with number five or number six. It depends, I guess, exactly what number six means, but I know we have discussed doing surveys on your end with your administration team, and I don't know if that fits with number five or number six, but that's part of the goals we've, we've discussed, and that needs to be in there. And I don't know where that goes, if it's five or six. It depends, I guess, what you mean, but that's been something on, on the table or in the discussion since I've been on the board, and so I would like it as part of these goals if possible. I think it goes to number five too, but I just wasn't positive.
Any other questions? Any other questions on number five? Comments? If not, number six, "Provide the board with an action plan that, and presentation on improving staff evaluation process throughout the district at all employee levels by April 30th, 2019." This, this more, more, this is more apparent in the evaluation of professional staff as we utilize the state mandated process, and while in some, in some regard, the process is, is valuable, it is, it is labor-intensive, and, you know, it's something that we've heard for, for quite some time, how, you know, there's got to be a better way to do this. And I think, not only in terms of efficiency and effectiveness, but also inconsistency. So that's where we're at with that particular item. Any questions on, on that, on that matter? If not, then I'll make these revisions, have these prepared for the board to review, and we'll seek your approval at next week's meeting. Thank you. Sorry. Next on the agenda, we have dates for board members' calendar, and I'll turn it over to board president.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Looking at our calendar, I just am noticing that December 3rd is coming up very quickly. So if anyone has any further changes or recommendations for the reorganization meeting in terms of committee work for the year ahead, make sure you let me know. And with that, we'll move on to old business. Sorry, I thought I saw you raise your hand there, Brian. Okay. And then new business. Also, nothing. Okay, so at that, we will move on to courtesy of the floor. Mr. Bickelman?
Joe Bickelman from Audubon. If you use the logic of Mrs. Ang, Dr. Angstadt and the board's comments, and if the 6,500 students that were projected for this district in '06-'07 would have showed up, you would have needed four new buildings. Four, four new buildings. My opinion is that the school board should close Arrowhead Elementary. This would save the district $999,000 per year in operational costs and avoid renovation costs of $12.7 million and rebuilding costs of Arrowhead of $25 million. This can be accomplished by moving sixth grade to Arcola and establishing Skyview as a four or five school. The remaining three elementary schools would be K through three. This can be accomplished due to the excess capacity at the Arcola-Skyview campus. The current seventh and eighth grade enrollment at Arcola as of November 1st, 2018 is 761, with the current PlanCon rated capacity of the building at 1,775. In the 2006-2007 school year, there were 1,391 students in Arcola in grades six through eight. There were special ed students in that number, and there was team teaching, I believe. The current Skyview sixth grade enrollment for 1819 is 388. There would still be excess capacity of 626 students in Arcola if all three grades were in that building for 1819. Adding the 378 fourth graders in the district to Skyview would result in total enrollment of 763 at Skyview, which has a rated capacity by PlanCon of 950. There are currently a total of 773 5-6 students in Skyview currently. Moving Arrowhead's K through three enrollment of 301 to Eagleville-Woodland and Worcester would result in those schools with excess capacity of 136, 169, 117 respectively. I think that this idea should be given serious consideration since it utilizes the district's excess capacity, saves the district a million dollars a year operationally, avoids spending $12.7 million to repair Arrowhead, and an estimated $25 million to rebuild Arrowhead. If you want feedback on the K3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12 grade alignment, you can contact the Colonial School District and speak to district office administrators, principals, and teachers. That's that. But you can see that there was almost 1,400 students in Arcola at six through eight, and there's currently 761. That's a big difference. I think the right-to-know request that added additional cost to Malone-McBroom, I don't get that. If, if a taxpayer does a right-to-know request, and the district says, "Well, we don't have that information," if they requested backup to some of Malone and McBroom's numbers, the district should say, "We don't have backup to those numbers because we didn't ask for backup for those numbers." So I don't know why Malone and McBroom is brought into this right-to-know request to fulfill this request. The district don't have it, they don't have it. There was a Friday in-service day in the district, and I heard 106 staff didn't show up because they were sick. 106 of them didn't show up. That was on a Friday, an in-service day on a Friday. 106 staff didn't show up for the in-service day. The IU transportation costs, you know, like for 1819, you know throughout the year how many kids are being transported by the IU in 1819, and you always have an updated cost projection for 1819 that you budget for the 1920 budget. So, you know, there's no way to miss that because you're, you're tracking that because the deduction comes off the following year's expenditure. So you should have a good handle on that.
Mr. Bickelman, I have to ask you to wrap up.
Okay. The finance committee was well-done. There was a lot of good questions, a lot of good analytics. I even broke out an applause at one point because I couldn't believe I was hearing what I was hearing as far as analytic goes to actual the budget and things like that.
Mr. Bickelman, I have to ask you to wrap up.
How long do I get to wrap up?
You're well over the four minutes. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Dr. Malik?
Jim Malik, Worcester. Very nice job, Joe. I can't say that much better on Arrowhead. With regards to the budgetary surplus discussion, maybe if some of you guys are putting more money into the school district, you know, and it was affecting you financially, you'd be more interested in getting some of your money back. I guess that's my point. You know, you'd understand the plight of the taxpayer. So I think you need to think about that when you go ahead and have your little discussion next week. There's a lot of people out there, senior citizens who are hurting, who can't really afford their drugs and their rent and other things. So when you sit up there and you spend money, you might want to think about those folks. With regards to Milo and McBroom, what's the reason they're not giving their presentation again? The right-to-know request? Is that what I heard?
Because of the expenditures.
Right. I don't get it either, to be honest with you. You know, when you do a right-to-know request for backup material, and they refuse to provide backup material for their study, that sounds to me real, like a real problem. They don't want to defend their study? You know, especially when you guys have a $2.6 million surplus, they can't afford it? I read their two-page contract. There's nothing in their two-page contract that said they had to give a presentation. So I'm not sure I understand what the problem is. Nothing in the contract required them to give a presentation, so how does that work? If they're not required by contract to give a presentation, then why, what's the story? They weren't required to give a presentation in the contract. So maybe you should blame the contract instead of the right-to-know requester. Are we playing politics here? And then you got a $2.6 million surplus? You can't pay them, what, $400 bucks to come down and give a presentation? Maybe they don't want to give a presentation because they're, maybe, you know, there's something that we're going to find out in the right-to-know request or the appeal to the Office of Open Records. Because I asked for an in-camera review. You know what that is? In-camera means they have to produce everything to the Office of Open Records lawyer, who's going to then determine what I get. And we'll find out what kind of records they got and what kind, what they don't have. And maybe they don't have anything. And the question becomes, if they don't have anything, how did they make their projections with no records? And that'll be interesting to find out. Now, I have a copy of the special meeting agenda, and this is from 11/18. And if you remember, Dr. Zerby gave a presentation. And after the presentation, we had courtesy of the floor. First time in 15 years, we had questions from the board after courtesy of the floor. How'd that happen? I've never seen, 15 years I've been going to meetings, how do we have questions from the board after courtesy of the floor? Where does that come from? Is that some kind of new decision, new policy we have?
Dr. Malik, please wrap up.
Yeah, can you help me out on that one? Is that your decision?
It was an oversight.
Oversight? It wasn't planned? Want to bet me money that it was planned?
Your time is up, Dr. Malik.
Tell me it wasn't planned.
Your time is up, Dr. Malik.
Why are you smiling? It was planned, wasn't it? So that we, so we couldn't comment on your, on your discussion? Is that, is that what happened?
Dr. Malik, your time is up.
Just tell me the truth. I just want to know the truth. 15 years I've been coming to board meetings.
Dr. Malik?
Yes?
It's time for you to sit down now.
Is it?
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Andrews?
Good evening. Johnny Andrews, Lower Providence. There was a discussion a few minutes ago about the draft goals for the superintendent. Here we are in November, and they're the goals for the period starting July 1 of this year, which is months ago. One item caught my attention, and that is a goal for the superintendent, I think it's something along the lines of recommendations for the Arrowhead building by March 31. It seems like that's too late in the year to affect any drastic change in, at the start of the next school year, the 1920 year. And, you know, even with regard to the closure of Audubon, which happened in mid-February, if that had happened earlier in the year, which was a target time of the superintendent originally, there might have been enough time then to decide to close two schools. But I think this, my, my feeling is that the superintendent realized it was so late in the year that the administration just didn't have the horsepower to close two schools in September of '17. And relative to all of that, I've updated my projections, and I have a document relative to that, that I'm ready to put into the, throw on the table, so to speak. And it just takes a lot of time to, to close a school. So again, I think, you know, a decision on Arrowhead needs to be made by something like the end of January. The, a few thoughts in another document that I have on problems with the superintendent's presentation at the special meeting on November 8th. It seems like the, the school capacities, which right now are in terms of rooms rather than students, they, they need to be worked on so that everyone has, has the critical facts, and it's relative to the critical facts, it's unfortunate that what we have today for the, from the Malone and McBroom efforts in 2018 are documents that various members of the public have serious problems about. They're, they seem to be way off on their, their birth projections that factor into their cohort survival model. We don't understand the housing numbers that they have, so, you know, we've put out money for something, and we just don't, don't have the answers.
Mr. Andrews, I need to ask you to please wrap up.
Yes, yes. And again, I want to emphasize that the five-year budgets slide shows a million-dollar deficit or more in each of the last four years, and closing the Arrowhead school would eliminate that deficit, which, you know, you might question, should the deficit have been in there to begin with? And then additional large savings come from cost avoidance of renovations or rebuild. I'm just amazed that...
Mr. Andrews, I'm sorry. You've gone beyond the four minutes. I need you to wrap up.
I'm just amazed that we have one timekeeper and eight silent directors, and here we are only at nine o'clock on a, on an evening when you have a big crowd here.
Mr. Andrews, I'm going to ask you to please take your seat now.
And I think a timekeeper is not constructive for the, for the affairs of the district.
Mr. Andrews, thank you. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
Hi. Jen Zavertnik, Lower Providence Township. I was really hopeful tonight to hear Eminem's presentation. I am... I am an Arrowhead parent, and I've had parents texting me all night, like, what's going on, what's being said about it? The closure, the rebuilding, the replacement of Arrowhead is a big stress for a whole school building, so I understand something happened with the money or whatever, $2.6 million surplus has been discussed. The enrollment status, I think, is very important to, in this decision, so, and a lot of people obviously have a lot of questions for Eminem, so I'm wondering if their contract could be extended or something could be happened to pay for them to come for a presentation. I think that's very important. Some of us will read, a lot of people, I think, would more understand their numbers and their data if they're heard from, if they're presented and able to ask questions, than if people are just left to, it's just been posted on the website and digested that way. It's also hard to hear about you guys figuring out what to do with $2.6 million when I walk by Arrowhead very frequently and see bricks crumbling off, and then $70,000 is going to the facade of Eagleville, and Arrowhead's roof is in disrepair, and you're giving money to the high school and Skyview and Arcola. So I do appreciate Mr. Ryan's discussion of capital gains funds, and if you guys have a surplus, that being put towards, if you're going to rebuild or remodel Arrowhead, that some of that money could be put to helping a smaller loan, so I do appreciate that. Thank, thank you.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Okay. Just wanted to take a moment to, to make a statement here. Part of my job in sitting here at this table is to try to maintain a sense of order, which is why we don't have a lot of back-and-forth conversations at the podium. I hear a lot of people ask questions, and it is, I believe, the will of this board to try to give answers to those questions whenever possible. But what I also hear is when the board responds to comments from the podium after the fact, that's not okay either. I just want to clarify one small detail. Right-to-know requests are something that are dictated by law, and it's a state-specific law. In order to comply with a right-to-know request, it requires a legal review, and having, excuse me, having a legal review of a right-to-know request incurs costs. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear. Does anyone else from the board have anything else before we adjourn?
Just say thank you for, someone has to keep time, and the 10 of us aren't going to keep time, that's why Mrs. Larsonese takes that role, and I would also just like to thank, to wish all of you in the audience and everyone in the community and the people at this table a very happy Thanksgiving.
May I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Drummond, Ms. Cancro, meeting adjourned.